Playtime is over.[8.69][8.69](laughter) All right, Susan?[13.01][13.01](laughter) It's your turn.
Are you finished?
No, because she's got to go next. So, our next report with closure required...[25.22][25.22](laughter) Do you need a minute?
No.
There we go. Okay. Is related to class rank and the GPA study final recommendations. Susan Modestet, Assistant Superintendent for Campus Services, will introduce the discussion regarding the class rank and GPA study final recommendations. Ms. Modestet, please.
Thank you, President Bender. We're bringing back recommendations this evening based on our April presentation to you and feedback that we got from you at that time. My plan is to go through each recommendation with the proposed timeline and then certainly respond to any questions or comments that you have. So I would start with something that will not change, and that is that we will continue to calculate an all-inclusive grade point average for students beginning in their ninth grade year, which will continue to be called the cumulative GPA. And this is the information regarding grade point that would appear on a student's transcript. It is the only published grade point that a student would have, and that will be implemented immediately for students in ninth through 12th grade next year, the end of their first semester. The following year, we will have all information on how this is calculated included in our course catalog. We can certainly get information on that available to parents on school websites next year, but can't include it in the course catalog for next year. As I said, this would...cumulative GPA would be reported at the end of each semester beginning with a student's ninth grade year. Something that we are recommending acceleration on is the Latin system for recognizing students who reach a district-determined standard of excellence. We believe that we can come to agreement and bring forward to you what those cutoffs would be and have that in place for graduation beginning next year.
Susan, I just want to say how much...how excited I am by that. I think we under-recognize and reward our Plano children, so I think that'll be a very nice thing to do and to make sure we're very public about it at their graduation. I would say that right now, the 3.6 to be an honor graduate, I don't think that's high enough personally, so I hope we'll shoot high but still have something that a good number of students can participate in.
The next recommendation is what we are calling our ranking GPA. So, this measure would be used for internal purposes only and would be used solely for the purpose of determining the top 10% of a graduating class, which as you know, we are required by law to calculate. This ranking GPA would be a limited number of courses. As we explained in the April meeting, these would be courses that the state has determined, count toward a graduation credit in the areas of math, science, social studies, and English. The ranking GPA would not be published for students, would not appear on a transcript. It would be a calculation that was done internally, and then we would share with students whether they were in the top 10%. The next point I am going to spend a little bit of time on, this is ranking the top 10% as required by state law and not ranking below that. And this is an area that we really examined whether there would be a way to accelerate this based on some comments that board members made in April. And at this time, we are not bringing forward that recommendation for you to act on this evening, but I do want to share what our thinking was and then certainly some pathways. We believe, well, we know for sure, that it will take us a year to create the background systems that we...to modify those systems that we're currently using for ranking. So in other words, the way that we currently run GPA reports has an automatic ranking involved with it, and so those kind of systems need to be taken apart and rebuilt. If we have information where we have ranked students, even if we didn't share it, that would be open for public...a public records request by a parent. So ethically, we believe we can't have that information and then withhold it. So we would need to clean those systems in-house in order to only be ranking the top 10%. So I say that as a foundational understanding that we don't...we believe it will take us next year to work on those systems. The following year, which...so that would be the students who would be juniors next year, so the graduating class of 2020. We think our systems would be in place that from a programming standpoint, we could say we are only going to rank the top 10% and not beyond that, that we could make that one change. The reason that...the things that we feel would need to be carefully considered in making that kind of change are these. Historically, we have not changed anything involving a student's graduation plan once students are midstream. So any change in graduation requirements, a change like this in how we would go about reporting, we have done with a rising class. One of the things that we don't know is whether students who are already in this pipeline as ninth, 10th, or 11th graders might have made different course selections had they known we weren't going to rank beyond the top 10%. So both from a transparency standpoint, and really even it would be something that we would want to talk about from a legal standpoint, we would want to be very cautious and careful that our change in that process was not impacting students in a way that was unintended. And then the second point that we would want to carefully consider is we have tried to approach this change in a very transparent manner, and I know that's been what you've asked of us as well. We have invited parents and teachers and other educated...other educators, students into the process as we've developed this plan. Then before we brought it to you, we held some communication meetings throughout the district so that we could be sure we had communicated. We had a forum for people to give us feedback after those meetings. And in all of that, our communication was this would begin with a rising class of students. And so if we were to make a choice, we would want direction from you and consideration on how we would want to proceed with that from a communication standpoint. If we chose to take this...this change and try to accelerate it, we would be implementing a portion of what this whole plan involves. But I also understand that by continuing to rank beyond the top 10%, we're impacting three more classes of students before the change happens. So that's our reason for not bringing that change forward this evening. I certainly think if you were to adopt this and ask us with this point to spend some time fall semester working with community, with parents, with students, with counselors, attorneys, looking at is that a possibility for acceleration? And being able to come back to you at the, you know, at the conclusion of that, we would be more than happy to do that. But I did want to explain why we're not bringing that forward as an accelerated point this evening.
So I'll tell you, Susan, I'm conflicted on this point because, you know, on the one hand, we've got students who've been making choices, you know, based on one particular system. However, if those choices are bad choices for them, if they could be making different choices to study the arts, for example, to continue doing orchestra or something like that, that would be more pleasurable to them for the better whole person, I would really rather have that happen now. But I'm...the conflict is I am very sensitive to a bait and switch, especially when you're talking about a governmental entity doing that. And if we've been out in the public making kind of representations that this program would be implemented over a period of time and then change that implementation, I don't know if that's the right thing to do.
I feel the same conflict, which is...
Is there any way to...I mean, I think what I would...I would want you all to do, and if we, you know, adopt this, I do want you to continue to think about it, about ways, if not changing the system, if there are ways to change the messaging for students so they know it's okay to take art, and it's okay to take theater, and it's okay to take these other courses that they may love to do, but that they're not because they feel the drive for five points on their GPA instead of four.
To ask a question about continuing thought, I know that there's going to be a group looking at honors classes and which get honors credit. So would you also implement that change only for a rising eighth grade class? So if Art I is currently honors but Band I is not, that wouldn't change for kids in the pipeline?
No. And that...that's a...you'll see that in a following slide, but a good example of why that type of change couldn't be made is you have students choosing to take those classes in the same graduating class but different years. So a student might have taken Art I as a ninth grader, and it was weighted at a 4.0 or whatever, and then we make a change and another student in the same graduating class takes it as an 11th grader. You've created discrepancy. So we...so that is clear to us that we couldn't make that change any sooner.
So what is the first rising class that you're proposing?
It will be next year's eighth graders. So it will be the ninth graders entering high school in 2019-20.
Okay. And will we have gone through that rubric to evaluate course weights by then?
Yes. It...we have to create the evaluation tool first. So we have a long list of to-dos once we have direction from you this evening that I think will keep us really busy next year. That will certainly be one of them. And we first need to create a tool, and then we need to create the system to bring forward and evaluate really all courses so that we can clear up some of the arbitrariness that we currently have.
So if we're going to do this for kids who are going to be eighth graders in the fall, but this study won't be done until after that time period, is that all right? Because eighth graders don't have that many options that would be regular versus honors, really their only options right now are in the math sequence?
Correct.
Math and foreign language?
Yeah.
So you've got just a little window to make that?
Exactly.
Okay. And so the catalog, the ninth graders, they'll be 2019 ninth graders?
Yes.
And that course catalog will come out in January of 2019?
Yes.
That's the target that you're trying to hit for that?
Yes.
I guess I have a few more comments on or questions about courses, and it was actually from one of your earlier slides in terms of, I guess it was bullet point number four, and where there was a draft of courses that were attached. It was the courses that would be acceptable, the core courses. A couple of questions, and the first one is I see that AP European History is not on there. Is that because it doesn't count toward graduation?
Correct.
So it's a great course that would probably have some pretty substantial drop-off in enrollment?
It could. You know, it's interesting even this year that maybe last year when AP Computer Science became available for ninth and 10th graders, we saw a decline in that course because there was another AP option for them.
Because there are really not that many at the 9-10. The other related questions is we have both micro and macro economics. Are both of those going to be acceptable?
Yes.
And...
That was a late catch.
Okay.
We actually caught that Monday.
And then we also have US government, and then I know Plano Senior had some sort of comparative government?
That does not count as a great...
Does it count?
I actually have, I could bring it up if you're interested. I have...I think I said this to you all yesterday, the list, total list of AP courses that we offer and the courses that...out of that list that count toward what we propose would count toward the ranking GPA. So there's quite a number.
You can't see that all of them.
You know, all of our...I think, you know, just as we begin to look at what are some of the changes and patterns that we might see, our...I believe our course that has the highest number of students taking a CBE for acceleration is Chinese 1 and 2.
One and 3.
One and 3?
Yeah.
And part of that is students are able right now that foreign language counts in the cumulative GPA and therefore in their class rank. So if a student is able to test out of for a Language 1 course, which is only offered as a regular course, and then a Language 2, which is only offered...Language 2 and 3 are only offered as honors or on level, and the only course then that they have counting in their class rank is an AP course that helps situate them. So I think there will be multiple courses. As the student talked about this evening, Health and PE is a course that we see a high number of students who either take credit by exam or take online, possibly because they're avoiding that counting in their grade point. That'll no longer be an incentive. And I thought his point was so beautiful. I mean, the number...if that's the only physical activity that a student...
He's here. He hears you say that. Oh, your friend.[1075.58][1075.58](laughter)
But you know, really such an important point. So I think some of the...part of the thinking behind limiting the courses that will count in ranking is truly to allow students some freedom of choice where they're not having to choose if I actually take that course and it's a 4.0 rather than a 5.0 weighting, it kind of penalizes me in my ranking.
Well, Susan, I just want to tell you how much I appreciate your rationale for the explanation for number five. It was very thorough, and I really appreciate the time you took to put that together. I will say that in sharing with people and hearing from the community, they're very, very enthusiastic about this one point and have said, "I wish it could start immediately." So I know, and I appreciate the limitations, but if it continues to look enthusiastic, I'd love for us to explore it, even if it can only be accelerated by a year. I think it really is a really best move for students. So...but completely understand your rationale and appreciate it very much.
It's funny, Susan, in looking at the transcripts of the top kids, like the 1 through 10 from our three senior highs, you certainly have to test out or do online for PE, Health, and Communications, and also some interesting patterns, and also Chinese 1 and 3. What they do is Chinese 1 and 2 are offered at the 9-10 schools, so they'll take the Chinese 2 honors, and then they'll get to the senior high, and they'll have both 3 and AP 4. So they just test out of the 3 and take AP 4. So that was from my local Chinese resident or expert. Also, it seems like what the kids do is, and this surprised me, they test out of Algebra 2, pre-calc. They either test out of physics or they take it online. And so it's amazing, the acceleration. And they all have to do geometry and algebra in junior high. So we've got some real issues of equity we're going to have to watch for as students start to learn how to maximize under this campaign. One of the plans that you all provided shows a student that would take pre-calc in ninth grade and AP Calculus BC in 10th grade. Is AP Calculus BC offered in all of our 9-10 schools?
No.
It's going to have to be. I mean, it sets up inherent fairness. If a student has to take a bus to another school, that's probably an hour out of their day that they'll have to spend that a student at their competing school, Jasper versus Shepton, won't have to do.
It really isn't. I do understand that, and I would say, having worked with those situations directly, I can honestly say we have never had a time that a student has not been able to access the course. Part of what we do, because we have shuttles that run between our 9-10s and our senior highs, between sixth period and seventh period, we are...we...our 9-10s, when they see they have a student in that situation, works with the senior high to ensure, "I need you to hold seats for me in that seventh period, BC Calculus class," or whatever, whatever it is. And students ride the shuttle there, and then they can take the bus home from there.
The challenge is, though, they're taking time out of their day and transportation that a Shepton kid would have to do that Jasper kid wouldn't because it would be on the Jasper campus. And so that would also complicate if they're in athletics, if they're in drill team or band. And so we're setting up an inherent unfairness between our 9-10 schools. And I know there'll be a cost associated, but I can actually see a family bringing suit over something like this if they feel their child has been disadvantaged. So I think we're going to have to look strongly. If we're going to narrow the courses that count, those courses have to be equally accessible.
Isn't there a morning option also, Susan?
Yeah.
So if the student has like end-of-day commitment and can do the morning thing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I do understand, I absolutely understand what's being said, and I think, you know, like the other conversations we've had, we're just going to have to make some choices. If we, you know, our practice has been if we have a course that only has two or three or even five students in it, it's not fiscally responsible for us to offer it on a campus when we have other means to do so. We have done everything to ensure that we don't have students who are ready to take that course and can't access it. But could we do that? Absolutely, we could. Some of the challenge that comes, it's not even as easy as just saying, "Well, we're going to add a one period of an additional staff for that 9-10," because really, they don't have teachers who are qualified or certified to teach BC Calculus. So you would have to find someone, have...and at least staff that at a .5. And honestly, getting a calculus teacher who wants to work part-time is challenging. So we can, and I don't mean to say that we shouldn't or can't do that because we can. It's just, as we've talked about, we have the...here are our resources, and if we do that, where are we going to take that from?
The other option would be to only offer those classes at senior high, so both sets of high schools are equally disadvantaged.
And we could, but we truly have students who are highly gifted in, I'll use math, for example. I mean that...so what that means is, and that's an option we've considered in the past, and Teresa, I think you'll remember those conversations, but that means a student who is highly gifted cannot get to the next course sequence. And we've developed our course sequences so fully now that even our accelerated students, I mean, with the addition of multivariable calculus, even our most accelerated students now have a math pathway all the way through their 12th grade year. And so if what we really believe is students should be getting to the courses that are appropriate for them and the breadth of those courses, it becomes challenging to then say, "But this year, you're going to sit out of a math class," which we know isn't best for them.
But that's not my point. My point is if you can offer to Jasper, but you say it's not economic to offer it at Shepton, you're disadvantaging the Shepton students who will spend time and transportation to get to the senior high. So out of equity, we would say, "We don't offer it at Jasper or Shepton, and those students, just transfer all of them, travel all of them to Plano West." So you're not preventing the child, but you're also not disadvantaging the kid who happens to live in the wrong school area.
Yeah. So we didn't do that simply because we have 30-plus students, which would mean we'd have to have another shuttle.
Another bus, yeah.
We don't, you know, but so...but all of that, I mean, that's all on the table for us to look at.
I trust you guys to do the research to figure out how to meet these needs. When I was a student here, I had a similar experience as a student. I was at Williams, and I was advanced in my French. And there were two of us on, you know, whatever grade I was in. I think I was in 10th grade, and maybe I was in French III or something, and there were just two of us in French III. So there was not a special class for us because, you know, it was not economical. So we were with the French II students, but in a separate classroom. And the teacher would come in and out, you know, periodically. We were on our own. I had like three classes like that over my career here. There are other ways, perhaps using technology, that those students could connect with another campus, perhaps, and have some, you know, digital distance learning experiences on their home campus. So, you know, I had a teacher who wasn't really...she didn't have time, but I was a self-learn, you know, a self-taught kind of thing, and that was fine. But there are more advanced ways of meeting those needs, and I'm sure you guys will maybe find a new solution that would be useful.
I have a question about that. Are we...when we have a student, for example, at Shepton who is told they can't take that course unless they move to a different campus?
They would never be told that.
Okay.
We would find it, we would partner with Plano West.
Okay.
To try to...
Perfect. That's what I want to know, is are we capturing that information for students who are looking for something that isn't at their home campus? That's really what I'm asking.
Yes. And I...
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just going to say, we also have some parameters for that, so we don't allow a student to say, "Well, I could take Art II at my 9-10, but I really want to take AP Art, and so I want to go to the senior high." We only advance in their core coursework if they have exhausted the sequence of courses at their home campus.
Okay.
Tammy, I don't agree with the statement of, "Let's make sure that they're all disadvantaged in the same way." I think we need to make sure that we give all of them the same opportunities, but not we're going to hurt one campus because we don't find an answer. We need to find an answer on how we address Shepton or any other district.
And what I meant by disadvantaging is if someone has to spend 30 minutes traveling if they come from Shepton, then the Jasper kid should have to spend 30 minutes traveling.
No. I think what we need to do is make sure that it's not a 30-minute, that we do solve this problem for them, and not that we penalize somebody else because we're not addressing or we don't currently address a certain campus. But, you know, Susan, I met with a group of parents earlier this week, and one of the comments that I heard that I frankly I didn't think about until I had that meeting was that if we...so right now, what we're trying to address is make sure that students don't try and game the system by not taking classes or not AP classes, that the way that it's presented now, that the ranking GPA only incorporates the... That the way that it's presented now, that the, the ranking GPA only incorporates the core classes, then those students will focus on core classes that are AP, so take more core classes, and now they're not taking AP classes that are not core. So that's, that's the concern that I heard. Any comments on that?
Yeah, Dan, can you, can you bring up the, no, the same, the same document where we were? Okay, so this, this, this is the document that I was referring to earlier that shows the whole scope of AP courses that we offer. So you can see, all of the courses that are not bolded, that are AP courses, will no longer count toward a rank, in a ranking calculation. So, and I also wanna back up. I, I would not say our focus was to not have students game the system to take more AP courses. I, I would say this, though. A fact is, if you want the highest ranking that you can achieve, it's very easy. You take the most AP courses that you can, that count, and you make a 97 or above in each course, and you, you are guaranteed to be at the top of the class. So there's not a way around that. I mean, I, I am absolutely, I'm not professing that we have found a way to, to make sure that students are not choosing now these courses for ranking purposes. But what I would say is this, in the past, students would end up taking, like, there are three or four AP art classes. Well, that's great if you're an art major and somebody that's passionate about that. So we've created a pathway just by virtue of what college board offers in AP courses that clearly advantages a student who's interested in art and clearly disadvantages a student who's interested in music, in P, in athletics, career tech, anything that's not there. So what we did see is students would go to AP art, or they would go to AP European, AP Psychology, any of these other courses as electives to, to load up on as many, that would be their elective choice. In the ranking GPA, as you saw by the example that I provided, students can still maximize all of the science courses that are available, and even doing that, will still have to take some other courses that are not AP courses. And so it's our hope, even for a student who says, I'm really not interested in math or science, but I'm gonna kill myself and take all of these math and science courses, even doing that, they will have to take some other courses that won't count toward ranking. And our hope is that those courses will be courses that they truly are interested in and, and want to explore.
And, you know, the flip side of it is you take more AP classes, there is no guarantee that you're going to ace them.
Exactly. Which is the batting analogy.
You know, and even in that meeting, I, I had to always consider that we have to address the entire district, 54,173. And for some, I would probably say for the majority, I would think that the ability, this change gives them the ability to take classes that are not AP and, you know, explore, and this, this would be the time to explore. I think that, you know, probably the best, well, not the best solution, one solution would be, but that's, that's outside of our control, is if every subject, we could offer an AP level. But we're not the ones creating this, these classes, college board does. I think an even better one is, because even that does not change one other element, and that is, I, I think I mentioned it to you some time ago, I was sitting at Starbucks not too far from Jasper, and I heard a group of students, they were sophomores, and they talked about considering, because they were supposed to go to Plano West next year, and they were considering moving to Plano Senior, because it would give them a better ability to squeeze into the top 10 percent. That's not how we should incentivize them. And unfortunately, that system is not in our hands. The state is the one that requires us to rank top 10 percent or tell you if you're in the top 10 percent or not. But if you're below the top 10 percent, even at this point, if we do not provide ranking below 10 percent, we're telling colleges, you have to look at the whole student. We're not gonna let you get off easy with, oh, this is how this student ranks here, and we're not going to have students that prefer a school that's not as good as the school that they're in. I mean, Plano West is in the top 1 percent, and so would that be a reason for students to try and leave Plano West so that they have a better chance to get 10 percent? I'd like to incentivize them to be in the best school they can, get the best education they can, and, and get, get all the options they can to explore things while they're in school and not when it's probably a little too late. So with that, I, I think that with this plan, having considered what I heard from a group of parents, but having to balance this with others in our district, I, I think you're addressing it. I, I looked at the original, if you remember Tammy, you and I, and I believe it was Greg, set together and created a set, as a subcommittee of the board, a set of guidelines for the work. I looked at the set of guidelines and I think that the proposal meets it. You know, we're not gonna satisfy 100 percent of, of our students or parents.
Susan, I think we have taken you off your presentation. How about we get you back on?
Oh, you had a presentation.
So our next point that we would ask you to consider is, once students have been identified in the top 10 percent of their class, that they, our notification to them will be, you are in the top 10 percent, but it will not be a specific rank, but we will invite them, if they would like to know their rank, what the process would be, and I promised Tammy, it will be a, an easy process for them to obtain that. But leave that in the hands of students and parents if they wish to know that.
Was there any change from your recommendation today from what you presented?
The, the only thing that changed were the acceleration of the honors system and then asking that, the practice of not ranking students at ninth and 10th, that, that those two things begin immediately with next year, that we would only rank students when they converge as a graduating class. That, that really summarizes, the, the one thing that I, I have included here, but we've already talked about, would be one of the tasks that we will begin immediately is designing the objective evaluation tool that would characterize characteristics, that would characterize what we're looking for in honors or advanced course weighting, and then begin the process of evaluating courses.
When are we anticipating the Latin system to be defined? Is that?
That, we will need to do that fall semester, by, by the end of fall semester.
Okay.
Really, we need to do it in time for grad, graduation and publication of those honors.
And those honors?
2019. 2019 graduation.
Yeah, the 2019 January course catalog.
Yep.
So the delineation on those cum laude, summa cum laude, magna cum laude, how are we determining those delineations?
I don't know yet, Nancy. I mean, we, we have, last year, when we began this work, we did look at what, is there a standard that universities use? Is there a standard that public schools use? That'll need to be part of the work, us to have some time to research that before we make a recommendation to y'all.
Okay, 'cause I'd been asked if it was gonna align with quartiles, but not necessarily.
No, it can't be ranking related.
We won't have quartiles. We, we, we won't know quartiles.
Well, that's true. Okay.
Yeah.
But it is not ranking related. It is absolute.
Right.
So you may have more than 25 percent.
Right.
And we wouldn't also, we wouldn't want it to be something that fluctuates from year to year, once we establish it.
Got it.
It would be permanent from year to year.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I appreciate the diligence with which that you and the committee and the entire staff have done with this. This is a two-year project. It's not something that has been coming to us without a tremendous amount of thought. I'm ready to vote.
Well, I have one, one comment before you go to the vote. As far as the counseling goes, will we have information for the students and parents so that they know what we're trying to achieve and that they will take the opportunity to take courses that they're passionate about and can explore? Will that be part of the counseling?
Absolutely. I mean, I think, as I said, we, we have a, are beginning to compile a task list and then prioritize what needs to happen, but not just the training that counselors will have, but the messaging to parents and students in our four-year plan will be very intentional.
Okay, thank you.
So Susan, in considering these recommendations, based upon the way that they've been outlined and the implementation timeline associated with it, am I hearing that the only potential change, should there be one, as a result of any study that you might do in the fall, would be related to item number five?
Correct.
So when the board is considering this, we're considering what is before us, understanding that additional study could lead to a slight modification to implementation?
To accelerate implementation.
To accelerate.
Schedule, the schedule of implementation.
Right, okay. All right. All questions answered?
David is ready to vote.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt the GPA rank and, the class rank and GPA study final recommendations as presented and explained?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously.
I'd like to just...
Make somebody happy.
I really wanna thank Ms. Modestet, the members of the committee, parents, teachers, staff, students. I also wanna thank the students who have shown up, meeting after meeting, parents who have shown up, meeting after meeting, who have made phone calls, who have met, who have expressed ideas and thoughts around this. A lot of people in the community have put a lot of thought into considering all viewpoints on this, because it's complicated and it's worth a lot of thought and deliberation. And so I know it took two years, but I really appreciate everyone really thinking deeply about this, because it's important, it's important work. And so for all of your time and dedication for everyone involved, Susan, and for your leadership, I just wanted to say thanks so much.
Thank you. The last item related to discussion and action is early childhood school number four, construction manager at risk, guaranteed maximum price. And Randy McDowell will introduce discussion regarding the early childhood school number four, construction manager at risk, guaranteed maximum price. Mr. McDowell.
Yes, thank you, President Bender. So what I'd like to do is turn it over to Tony Pearson, who's our Assistant Director of Facility Services, to give a brief project overview. And also in the room is VOK Architects and Cadence McShane, the construction firm. Tony?
Thank you, Randy. Thank you. Appreciate everyone having me here this evening. The, the commit conversation that was happening beforehand is just a nice lead-up to this conversation about the early childhood school number four. As Randy did mention, we do have VOK Architects here with us tonight. We got Ross Rivers, Bailey Craighead. We've got Cadence McShane in the back there, our construction manager at risk, Mike Geach, Steve Levy, Jennifer Norris. We came in and presented this to the board November 28th. We kinda did a review of this, and so just kind of a brief recap from me, and then I'll hand it over to, to Ross to kinda just go through the PowerPoint here. The early childhood school was a project on the 2016 bond. It was identified as, as a project that we'd be looking at doing. A piece of land was identified back in April of 2017, last year. That is, for those that don't know where it's located, it's, it's south of George Bush, west of Preston Road. It's in Dallas, in South Maple Shade Lane. That piece of land was, was, we looked at it to see if we could fit a early childhood school about the size of Isaac's. And VOK was tasked with that, and they, they looked at providing one that was similar in shape and size to Isaac's, and then also one that was the same program of spaces, had all the same classroom components as Isaac's, but had a different shape. We reviewed both of those and we chose the one that, that had a different look to it and went to, to kind of proceed with Susan Modestet's group and Suzanne Espina to kind of flesh out all the details and fill that in. Prior to that, we were asked in how quick, you know, back, I'm sorry, back when we were looking at the land, we were asked to see how quickly we could do an early childhood school, if we could do it, have it complete in fall 2019 or fall 2020. When we asked our team, they identified that they could do it, they could relatively do it, starting at that point and moving forward, and they could finish in fall 2019 if given the opportunity. And that is currently what we've been working towards. As mentioned before, the program of spaces is similar to Isaac's. The, the, we do have it recommended to the board tonight for, for GMP approval. In doing so, in, in what our bond budget was, and what our bond budget was related to, we did reduce the Isaac's by about four classrooms, and that was just to try to bring this, this cost, our GMP that we're recommending to the board, just more in line with what our initial bond budget cost was. Ross will get into the number of classrooms that we have in our plan, but it was just an intent, or it was just a, a goal of trying to get our budget more in line with what we had initially proposed as part of our bond for the district. You know, some added costs, I'm sorry, I didn't mention this too. Different from an Isaac's model, we did add, are looking to add a dining room and a full, full-service kitchen. So those aspects added to our cost and why we, why we looked to drop by four classrooms was to get us back in line. With that said, I think I am gonna turn it over to you, let you kinda work through these. If there's any questions at the end, obviously, we're all here to, to kinda help you answer those.
Okay, I know, I don't worry. Thanks, Tony. Thank you, board members, for having us tonight. We just kinda, we put together this quick slideshow to just kinda tell you where we are. We're back in, in November, as Tony mentioned, we presented this to you. So we just kinda wanted to talk about a few things to update you on where we are. So this first one is Isaac. This is showing 62,199 square feet total. This is the model that we based the new facility off of. This one does have 24 classrooms, nine bedrooms, does not have a formal kitchen or cafeteria, and has two separate playgrounds. This is the look of it, as Tony mentioned, and we mentioned to you in our November presentation, we did look at this floor plan to fit on the site that you guys have purchased to see how it would work. We presented two options, 'cause we felt like we owed you a response to that site specific, give you a little bit better, better layout. So in meeting with the team, the administration here, as Tony mentioned, arrived at the, the next floor plan you see here, which is the site plan, this is the design that was to accommodate the site better. It's kind of the triangular site. We've got quite a few restrictions, so this was that solution. This one is about, I'll, I'll round it to 300 square feet larger than Isaac. It's got 19 classrooms, nine bedrooms. It does include a full service kitchen. It does include the roughly 1,400 square foot dining area. Another difference between this facility and Isaac is that we combined the two separate play, playgrounds at Isaac into one, that's in the inner courtyard of this, that's, that's fully protected with the building as well as fencing. And then storm shelter was another thing that makes this one quite a bit different. The 2015 code, I'm sure you guys are aware with your other projects, does put into effect the requirement for storm shelter for new educational facilities. This, even though it's an early childhood, it does fall under the educational facility classification by code, so we are providing that as well. City of Dallas is where this is, and they have a few other additional requirements, kinda drove the cost up a little bit, their green energy code. The way they interpret the storm shelter requirement is a little bit different. The way they interpret the storm shelter requirement is a little bit different from the city of Plano. So it's a little bit larger than, and maybe in some other jurisdictions. I think their, their interpretation is very, a very conservative interpretation, which when you're dealing with kids, you know, why would you not be so? To some degree, it makes sense, but there's certainly a follow-up because of that. As Tony mentioned, we did, working with Cadence McShane, McShane in this during the process, they're providing us cost estimates at different phases of the project. So we started to see that the trend lately is square foot costs are on the rise. Knowing that ahead of time, what we did was we identified several different items that we could put into the bid documents that are alternate bids to try to help us mitigate some of those costs if they did in fact come into play. One of those was the four classrooms. We decided to reduce the building by four classrooms, so from 24 down to 20. And one of those actually is a second structured classroom. But that's one of the things we did to identify at the beginning of trying to mitigate some of that extra cost. And that's how we arrived at this reduced classroom number from Isaac. The exterior didn't really change a whole lot. Still the same look as we presented to you before with some minor reductions, but like I said, the, the look is the same. And again, this was a new facility, but we tried to really keep your look of your other existing facilities that you have, keep with the same materials, the brick and the stone. And that really is it. We are here prepared to answer any questions you have on it, but I just wanted to take a quick moment to tell you where we are after the bid.
Okay, any questions?
Board members, do you have any questions? I think we're, we're settled on your presentation, so I don't think we have any questions for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, I would like to point out on, on this layout, it's hard, hard for me to point out there, but if you look at the top of the wing that's going up to the, up to the rod, you'll see that there is space between there and the drive. That's where those four classrooms were located. You can also see how easy it would be in the future to come back and put those in. When, when we bid it out, so the construction budget on this project was 12,450,000. The initial plan, as I understand it, was to open it in 2020. And so there was about three years of inflation included. And that was 4,120,950. So that was assuming another year later than we currently are to get to that inflationary factor. So that took the total budget to 16,570,950. When it was initially bid out with 24 classrooms, we were almost 1.9 million over budget. And so that is just the rising construction cost. And so we did look at ways to try to get it back in closer to budget. The easiest way to do that was reduce square footage. The way to make the most significant impact the quickest without majorly changing the scope of what the building looked like. And so by removing those four classrooms, we were able to get the construction cost down to just over 17.5 million. And as you can see, we're still almost a million over budget with all inflation added in. And so we'll, we'll have to continue to monitor that through the budget and see where we can make other adjustments. So, so that is the current status of early childhood school number four. And if there's, if you have to take any more questions.
I think it, maybe in a work session, we, we talked about this. We talked about operational costs?
Yes.
Or asked about operational costs. How much is this going to cost, this facility going to cost to operate?
And I think that was a conversation that happened before I was here, but I do have the numbers on that. And so I believe Mr. Fortenberry and maybe Ms. Modisette and others put the numbers together. The operational cost in, in the summary that I've seen is about 970,000. And so that does not include any teaching staff or teacher aides. That is only operational cost for the other staff. And then it would also be utilities, you know, landscaping, upkeep, cleaning of the building, insurance, those types of costs. And that's assuming that any students that are moved into this facility are already being taught in the same half-day or full-day situation that they're currently in, and their teachers and teacher aides can be moved over to cover those students. So if you change any configuration or add more students, it gets to be a bigger number. The other thing that's not in the 970,000 is transportation of taking students from a neighborhood type school to now moving them to a satellite type of pre-K setting. And so those, those are the, were the estimated cost at that time. It, it does take quite a bit of additional staff to open and run an additional facility.
You know, if we have that partnership with commit and we're able to expand the student body for this school, we'll be getting additional water. Is there a break even or a?
Are you talking if you go to full-day pre-K?
Oh, well, I don't know if we, I don't, are we talking full-day?
Uh huh.
For income eligible?
Okay.
Yeah.
So there is no additional state funding for full-day pre-K?
That's right.
You only get funded for half-day. So anytime a district offers full-day pre-K, unless it's part of the Head Start program and it's a little different, but it is fully at the district's cost.
Okay, for that additional half-day?
That's right. And so when we look at that, we typically have 16 students per pre-K class. And so if you look at it, for every 32 students in half-day pre-K, when you make them full-day, it costs approximately $100,000 because you've got to add another teacher and another aide. For every 32 students, it's roughly $100,000. Ellen Beth and I looked at that to go from half-day to full-day pre-K.
And is that baked into your $970,000 already?
That is not, that is not. That's assuming the same students that are currently in half-day or free or full-day, whatever setting they're in, it would be the same. They would just be moving from one campus to another.
But they would all become full-day?
If they did, then for every 32, we've got to add another 100,000 to that $970,000 number that I gave you. And transportation costs were not included in that number as well.
And they wouldn't all become full-day because if, when we determined need, we determined that students that qualify as second language learners, but not economically disadvantaged, don't need a full-day program, that they're making adequate progress in a half-day. So we wouldn't recommend moving students who are served in that capacity, nor are our special ed students all served. If we moved completely to a full-day model, that would impact immediately, we would need to be serving all of our special ed students in a full-day model. So it, it really, that would be, the model Randy's talking about would be with no growth. It's just looking at maintaining basically the number of seats that we currently have in half-day, full-day.
I think-
But the idea of this is that we, that was the whole point of building this building. And I think the term, if we build it, they will come. That was the justification for building this thing.
Well, the idea was that children who were income-eligible would get full-day so they can make the educational gains we'd like and to prevent the remediation that we've talked about. And so I think what's before us is none of the operating costs have changed, none of the strategies changed. What's changed is the cost to build the building because there have been inflationary times in terms of construction. So all the costs we're talking about right now were already considered when we made the original decision to build this. And then the full richness of this program is not just to offer the full, the full day for income-eligible, but to bring resources to a part of the district that's been dramatically under-resourced in terms of any type of support. And I know looking at the support structures, wraparound services is an important thing of what we're also looking at.
So this is very complicated. Full-day, half-day, sped, English language. It's just very complicated. So I'm going to ask a few questions and help, ask you to remind me of a few things. The satellite programs that we have added to our elementary campuses across the district, we added those program, those about two classrooms or so at certain number of campuses for full-day income-eligible students.
Correct.
Okay. How many, approximately how many kids are in that program right now?
We have 512, I'm going to say seats. I, I, I can't say that 100% of that is filled, but we, we served approximately 512 full-day students this year between our satellite campuses. And then we also offered several full-day classes at our early childhood schools.
Okay.
Plus about another, I'm going to say 140, and I could be off a little bit, students who are in Head Start, who are also considered, that's a full-day program, so.
Okay, so about 650 kids. And how many do you think to the best of your ability are out there and eligible, but not in one of these programs at present?
So when we did this presentation last, a year ago, April, we, we calculated what we believed to be the total number of economically disadvantaged students. And then based on our study, which was what was the maximum percentage that a district captured of eligible students, which was about 70%, top end, we believed we could have a maximum number of 800 students.
Okay. So the delta is 150.
Right. About.
Okay. And presently, we heard commit talk about the marketing to, you know, go and get kids. By my calculations, it, well, they said a 7% yield was the increment. So, you know, that's like 45 kids or something like that on top of our 650. So that gets us to, you know, maybe 700. So there's another 100 to be potentially identified. So of the 650, the 140 that are Head Start would stay at Head Start.
Right.
Of the 500-ish that are in the other three early childhood schools and the other, is it like 16 campuses or so?
Yes.
Something like this, okay.
32 classrooms, I think.
All right. Well, let me back up. Of the, if we were able to find the other 150, let me go back to that for a minute, through some means, where do you think they are?
That's a really good question. I don't think, we know, we know where they're not. There's not, I couldn't say there's a hotspot, an area that we're not drawing kids from. What I would say maybe part of our challenge has been, we know that there are a higher number of potential students on our east side that perhaps we're not serving. And so as we've, but there, honestly, there's probably a very small, tho- those 100 students are probably spread out somewhere across the district. It's not that there's 40 of them that are located in a certain area. I think we're getting, based on where our elementary programs are, we're, we're drawing a large number of students from their, from the community in which the classrooms are situated. I'm not answering the question very well because we really don't, we honestly, we don't know.
But the, the, wherever they are, the population that we're trying to reach is 150.
Correct.
Okay.
I have to say, I'm, I'm pretty uncomfortable with the way this conversation is flowing because we did some significant study. I, I would bring my notebook upon notebook of the numbers, the folks we weren't serving. And the only thing that's changed is the cost of the building has gotten more expensive. Nothing else has changed.
The other thing that's changed is our financial position. So trying to be a fiscal, a responsible, make a fiscally responsible decision and see if, you know, make sure that I'm understanding where the kids are and if we have the demand right now to, to spend, you know, this amount of money and then take a million, $2 million from our budget on an ongoing basis to operate it when we might have capacity presently in our buildings.
This is the same issue that, that I've raised when we talked about this building the first time and I lost out on the vote. But my concern has all along with this, this building is do we really, do we need it? Are we not serving our kids through these, these, these kids through this, the program that we put in place years ago, which is to use our capacity until we don't have capacity and then we build this building? And so, you know, my questions about operation costs, Tammy, are, because we've said, we just adopted a negative budget and we're talking about robbing Peter to pay Paul and we're talking about taking from one pot to pay for another. Well, this is another million dollars that we've got to come up with to operate this building that we gotta, we gotta take it away from somebody else. So, you know, look, I lost on that vote already, but I still have the same concerns I did two years ago when we talked about it the first time, or a year ago, whenever it was.
Well, I think you brought up another consideration, and that was the special needs student. And I heard something a minute ago when I asked about the full-day program. You mentioned something about having to offer to more special needs students.
I, I was saying that in the, in response to, if, if we, if we decided to serve all students in a full-day program, that's what I was saying, like, we've decided currently our students who are second language learners who qualify for half-day, but we don't believe would need a full-day. If we said our, our model for serving all students would be we're going to full-day programming for everyone, then that would impact our special needs students as well. That, that isn't our current proposal.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I'd like to make a comment too about the building because I'm not sure there is a need for that building also. Because the thing is that we, we're not at capacity right now in all our schools for pre-K. And there's another thing is that when you're talking about special education for the pre-K children, half-day is a long day for them. And I was told when I did my tours of pre-K that even the principals, even the teachers says, Angela, half-day? Because I had my kids through that program before Isaac's and that parent early, early childhood school. A half-day is a long day for a three-year-old. And a half-day for special education students are even longer for them. So I mean, I don't recommend having full-day pre-K for special needs children because it's, it's very difficult for them already. And then you're going to make them go a longer day when they're only three years old. They can't handle that much, you know.
I think the point of the full-day is because the parents can't take advantage of a half-day because they work. So they opt out of going at all. And that's what we're trying to capture, is the students who need the services.
Well, I think certainly we were talking about full-day for income-eligible children. And when we looked at capacity, school by school, Huffman only had room because basically the neighborhood had deserted Huffman. And if we ever restore Huffman to a fully functioning school, you're not going to have the classrooms. Mitchell needed programs, but they were at capacity. Rosemary Hager tried to squeeze in a program, but their schools are also at capacity. So looking at that west cluster in terms of having opportunities for children to participate in pre-K, we don't have capacity. We also have never provided any sort of wraparound services to that part of the community. You've got Plano Family Literacy on the east side that served that community for a long time. There are no services. And so I am tremendously worried at this moment. We're taking a huge step backward in terms of the conversations we've had with our community, with the bond committee, with what we're trying to do to increase academic achievement in that part. I mean, there are no other places where we could have any of the support services that we're talking about. So we're walking away from something really important.
So I'm not suggesting walk away from anything, Tammy. I am fully committed to full-day pre-K for income-eligible students, period. And I think everybody else is here too. I'm not, I don't think anybody's wanting to push back on that at all, given, you know, what- given, you know, what we've heard from commit and what works. It works, fully committed to that. In fact, personally, I'm committed to growing it, to find those other one hundred and fifty kids where, wherever they are, and I, we don't know where they are, to get to that eight hundred capacity number. I want to do that. And I wanna do it in the most economical way possible. So I'm just try- wanting to explore that question. Um, on the topic of, um, the service needs, I agree with you that we need that. And if for some reason it didn't make sense to build the building right now, I don't think that has to impact in a negative way finding a home for services right now for that part of the community, you know, for the, for the western part of the community. So I'm just trying to, things, the thing that's different is our economic situation.
That would then apply to anything we plan to build, including buying our center, which also is something that we turn, we think we're gonna save on rentals, but it's actually gonna cost a half million dollars to run that building. So we've made some significant decisions that have costs. Um, I think to, to single this out that we do such good is not in concert with our conversations both at this board table and with our community for the last couple of years.
I think it's responsible for us to ask questions. And and then, you know, make her dis- make her decisions.
So Susan, are we, is there a capacity need, this building?
Um, well, currently, it, probably the, the one school that, um, we would need to make different plans for if we didn't build this fourth early childhood school for the year after next would be Mitchell. If, if we, one thing that we haven't explored in, um, in our planning is, um, we haven't looked at, for example, a school like Mitchell offering, um, pre-K and transportation, say at a school like Jackson or, um, a, a school that would have capacity for another pre-K classroom or two. Hager, we, um, Hager has only about, I think, a maximum of thirty-two students that qualify. And so we are, um, we're offering two classrooms there, but, but actually filling it with students, a cou- a handful of students from other areas. Because they, they, even if they made a hundred percent, we, um, would barely have two classrooms. As Tammy said, right now, we have room at Huffman. Um, we have some potential room at, um, Beatty, perhaps for another one, one more full day classroom. Jackson is fine, Sigler is fine as far as capacity and those. So I'm, I'm talking about those schools because they're, they're the concentration in that immediate area.
If, if, you know, we come in, if commit comes in next year and helps us maximize that pre-K, are we maxed out down there to be able to serve those kids?
Not if we're willing to per- I mean, if, if one of the things that we, we consider as we would provide transportation to another neighborhood school, then no, we're not. I mean, we, we, we continue to have some capacity at the schools that I just mentioned. I mean, h- honestly, Mitchell is, is the one that I think we couldn't continue to offer until their enrollment begins to dip.
If we provide transportation to another school, and these are pre-K, where are they gonna go in first, or kindergarten and first grade?
They would go to their home campus. I mean, it would be similar to us providing transportation to an early childhood school for their pre-K experience, but then they would go to their home, their neighborhood school for kindergarten.
So am I to understand, um, from a timing point of view? The decision that is before us tonight yields, uh, a favorable outcome from this decision, a vote for, yields a building that opens next
That's correct, that would be the goal.
Next school year.
Yes.
Yeah. So if for any reason, uh, we're, we didn't make a decision to do that tonight, then what happens?
So, uh, we really haven't had an in-depth discussion on that. My, I anticipate it would be very challenging to open the campus in twenty nineteen if we waited until an August board meeting or later. I, I don't, I don't think it could happen. Uh, I think if it did happen and Katniss is in the room, I don't think give a nod or not, but, um, I, I would think it's probably gonna come with some additional cost of overtime in trying to build in some ways to accelerate the schedule.
Okay.
It, it's a challenge to build a campus of this size. Uh, twelve months is a, is a pretty tight timeline. It's been my experience.
So how would the transportation work if we build this building next year? Parents take their kids to the home campus and they're trans- did bus over to the
Yeah.
Childhood Center or the Childhood Center?
Part of what we've, um, w- w- once we've made a decision on, um, a number of classrooms at, at this campus, we've been working on various, we, we would need to change feeder patterns, obviously. Um, and so we've met with transportation a couple of times. Currently, we don't offer two-way transportation to our early childhood schools for students who are not special needs. We, um, for full day. So our, our current model for half day is students get to their neighborhood school and then, um, are transported to early childhood. So we have, half of our elementary schools have a morning session and half have an afternoon session. So we're only running buses to half the schools, um, morning or afternoon. So part of what would change with this would be we would continue to be offering half-day service because we continue to have half-day students. And then we would be adding full day transportation for, for all schools, um, for all elementary schools that have students in an early childhood. So transportation has been kind of waiting for us to get back with a feeder pattern to give us a, a cost. I mean, i- our, our belief is if we don't provide transportation, because currently when they go to neighborhood schools, they either walk or they're bus eligible for the buses that already transport them and they get on with an older brother or sister. So we really believe if we don't offer tran- transportation, we, we, we won't be able to maximize our enrollment.
And that's exactly what we do for our other early childhoods, right? Provide transportation?
Uh, oh, that's what I was saying. Right now, we only provide half-day transportation. And so we're able to kind of maximize our, um, buses because we designate these twenty-two schools only are, are, um, only send students to the morning session. So we're only busing half our s- half of, from half of our campuses in the morning and half in the afternoon. But we don't, we don't provide currently for early childhood schools. We don't provide transportation to and from for those limited full day programs that we have in our early childhood schools. But if we're, i- i- if we build a fourth early childhood school, the plan would be we would be moving the majority of full day programs that are located at an elementary campus. Those would be moved off the elementary campuses into our early childhood schools. And so then we believe we would have to offer transportation for full day or we, we don't think we'll get students to attend. So it is different than our current model. We're, we're more than, we'd be kind of more than doubling the transportation we're currently offering.
Okay, does anyone else have any other questions? Okay, then I will entertain a motion.
I move that we amend the contract, CSP two thousand nineteen dash zero nine eight, early childhood school number four, to provide the guaranteed maximum price of seventeen million, five hundred and seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? At this point in time, the motion is failed. So staff, uh, at this point in time, will you bring this back to us at an appropriate time where you can provide additional information with regard to how we can meet the needs of the student body that we have and how we can grow the enrollment using the facilities that we have? And, uh, and then bring this construction project back to us at a point in time for our consideration such that we could consider opening it the very next year? So use the interim time for study? And, uh, this is not saying this isn't going to happen, but, um, can you help us to maximize our resources and consider this again? This is not a, this is not a, something that is, we are, this is not, in my opinion, a reflection of not valuing this effort or the, meeting the needs of the, the families in this com- part of the community. I, Sarah, would hope that you could also um, find, uh, could, could you look at ways in which we could provide these wraparound services perhaps even sooner than it would have taken to have a facility standing? Similar to the approach that we used with the, um, use of existing facilities for full day pre-K. This is obviously very difficult.
Mm-hmm.
And, um,
Can I add to the charge for the administration? I'd also like to know what wraparound services you propose that we provide there and how we're gonna pay for it.
And I agree with, with David too, because that's something very important to me, to be fiscally responsible. And, and to make sure that, you know, uh, we understand that, you know, we're not out of capacity yet. I mean, we're still looking for students for, to, to go to our pre-K programs.
Could I just ask a clarifying question on the?
Yes.
Are, are we looking at wraparound services for early childhood students?
As you choose to define them. I, I'm, I, I don't personally wanna limit you.
Okay.
Susan, to me, I, I'm sorry to editorialize, but this has been part of the issue. We, we don't know what we're doing down there. So let's make a plan. Let's get a plan first before we decide to build a building.
And you, on the priorities that were on next year's plan of work, the discussion of exploring what wraparound services would look like and what community partners we can engage in wraparound services that might be more cost-effective, um, is a part of the priority for next year's working. That would continue for sure. There are, Susan, obviously lots of kids beyond the pre-K age whose families would benefit from
Right.
social assistance.
Sure.
So I think the idea behind having it housed there was for families
Right.
to come there. We can send, let's see if we can send them someplace now and not have to wait for a building.
Sure.
So maybe that part we could, I know it's June, but.
Well, we have added in the budget recommendations some additional social work services for those schools. But, but I, I just wanted to be clear, I understood.
Okay.
You know, it's really painful that we have to make this decision at all. But it, it all comes down to dollars and cents.
Maybe we reduce recapture payments.
Maybe just don't comply.
I, I, I'm very sympathetic and I know Tammy's very disappointed and I don't wanna disappoint her, but just have to make some really tough decisions right now. Okay. No more voting, except on policies. Okay, next section. Uh, thank you, Randy and others, for Katniss Machane and BLK for being here. Uh, first update, staff's report is from the Gifted Advisory Committee. Dr. Katrina Hasley will introduce the Gifted Advisory Committee report.
Thank you, President Minder. We have Teresa Biggs, our Director of Advanced Academics, here. She does a wonderful job facilitating the Gifted and Talented Advisory Committee. So she'll report on the goals for seventeen eighteen and the work of that committee this year.
Thank you. Um, these were the two goals that the board, you gave us for twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. You wanted us, you wanted a report on status updates on our prior year's recommendations. And you also asked us to explore opportunities to offer courses contributing to a higher degree by the time of high school graduation. So the updates are, um, as follows. The committee recommended the development of a one-day or half-day parent conference around gifted issues. Also asked for an increase in communication from campus to parents and the development of a website that would be specific for families that had students receiving gifted services. And the implementation goes as follows. Uh, we are in the process of developing the district website and that will launch this fall. We will, on that website, we will have the full continuum, K through twelve, of gifted, um, overview of gifted units. We will also have links to state and national organizations that parents can access for further resources. Campuses now do a, a common annual all-campus presentation. Regular updates go home to parents from gifted specialists. We offer two parent seminars, one in November, one, actually, three in November. Three were offered on one day, they were repeated, and then three in April. So we had over eight hundred parents attend those seminars and received a really positive feedback. We continue our annual program evaluations in which both students and parents evaluate our PACE program. That information goes directly to the PACE teams or PACE specialists on those campuses. And we, uh, have implemented online workshops for parents. The Gifted Advisory Committee will choose three workshops that are pushed out to our entire parent community and they access those free of charge. We also, thanks, um, to the district and the board's decision to move us back to full-time gifted specialists at our title campuses, our low PACE enrollment campuses. Those specialists are now asking, acting as resources for grade-level teaching teams in a way that they were not able to do before. They're pulling advanced academics enrichment groups for underrepresented student groups, our low socioeconomic and our underrepresented kids. They're being served, um, in pull-out and push-in groups and we served over fourteen hundred kids through this program that we had not, uh, served before. And we're continuing our SEL curriculum specifically gifted learners. We started rolling that out this year and we'll expand those offerings, um, in the coming year. The second goal was that you asked us to investigate the higher degree by the time of high school graduation and we moved through this process. We looked at what people were doing around us, researching districts. The committee met with Dr. Lisa Tivido and she brought us up to speed on our current dual credit offerings and we discussed in committee. And of the recommendation that came back was we, at this point, the committee didn't recommend any change for dual credit plans. They were very encouraged and supportive of the expansion of dual credit courses. Uh, the committee was very excited about the move to embedding Plano staff as instructors for, for multiple reasons. Um, one that surfaced One that surfaced frequently was just understanding the nature of high school kids. They're, they're not college kids yet. And the committee, of course, is very specific to parents of students receiving gifted services. So I understand it's a small voice in a larger community, but they would ask that there would be a level of caution about any further consideration regarding an early college, high school campus. And that concern was related to the stress that their students are under, kind of ties into the GPA ranking conversation, that they felt their kids might feel pressured to receive an associate's degree before high school let out. So there, it wasn't a, no, we don't want this, it was, let's be really careful. And then the state, we know, of course, is not accepting applications anyway right now, and there are revisions coming down the road. Then we would request, the committee asks that these would be our goals if the board approves for next year. The, one of the things that came out of the parent webinars is parents started to, after the, I'm sorry, not the webinars, the seminars that we gave, the face-to-face seminars, they started grouping and talking together and realizing that they didn't have support on campus that they would like to have. And so we, they'd asked, they would like to investigate the creation of parent support groups specific to parents of students receiving gifted services, and like to look at districts in the area, see how they do it. Is it always tied to the PTA? Is it independent of the PTA? Is it through the Sage group, through the SEND group? So that would be something that we'd like to take on for next year. And then the second one was parents felt overwhelmingly pleased about the services they received in their PACE classes, but they felt that they were not always as comfortable with the differentiation that their students receiving in their other classes specific to their students' learning needs. So the second goal we would like to take on is looking at how accountability for gifted instruction ties into the High Reliability School Initiative, because to me, that seems like a natural marriage, and that would be something we'd like to take on as our second goal for next year. These are the committee members that served, and some didn't serve the entire two years, but they certainly had a voice in everything we had to say and everything, all feedback that they gave, so we wanted to honor them. I don't think any of them are still here tonight, though. But if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I have one question. Do you think, does the committee think that there is anything that the district does that holds a student back? Especially a gifted student back?
No, and we talked about that at length. I wanted the parents to be really honest, and they are very honest, very passionate parents. But no, there was no dissatisfaction or any feeling that they were, their students were being held back in any way. To Susan's point earlier, if they had a student that they felt exhausted a course at that campus, they felt that the district stepped right in and provided whatever they needed to move to the, to the next course. So out of this particular group of parents, we did not hear that.
Is there a way for the committee to research that and see if there are any ways? I'll tell you the reason I bring this up. Of my three years on the board, there was only one grievance that was in open meeting. And that was of a student that could not take AP Statistics in parallel with AP Pre-Cal while a sophomore, while being a sophomore. And we denied him the ability to do that. So the question is, are there any other cases like this? Do parents think that a student that, you know, might be gifted and can take some of the classes earlier than others, that there's something, whether in our policies or our catalog, that prevents them from that?
We, we looked at that, not this past year, but the year before we looked at that, and then came back and looked at it through this different lens, and we did not find that to be a problem. Now, I'm sure, I'm not privy to the grievances that you may hear, but there may be things going on that we're not aware of, that there'd be no way for us to access that information just because of privacy issues. So that would be something that I would have to find out through, you know, Susan.
Actually, that was an open meeting.
Right, but beyond that one, if it's not something that's open, we wouldn't know, unless it's a parent that's on the committee or knows someone outside of the committee, and we hadn't heard, we didn't have any concerns.
It would be good practice to have kind of a hotline for anybody who thinks, no, that there's something in policy, there's something in our practices that holds a student back.
I can tell you this, when we do these evaluations, these parent evaluations that go out to all of our parents, there is a box where they can provide any comments or concerns, and that has not come up. And we've had, like, this year, I believe, we've had, I think it was about fifteen hundred parent responses, and that did not come up this year. It didn't come up last year either, so. Okay?
Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you.
Thank you very much to the committee. Dr. Beth Brockman will introduce the Diversity Board Advisory Committee report. Dr. Brockman.
Thank you very much. I would like to welcome Ms. Dee Tippin, Sharon Bradley, and Dolly Thomas to present the Diversity Advisory Committee report for this evening, and thank them very much for their service over this last year and their stamina in this meeting. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. I am looking for our presentation, but this is not ours. And we will be quite brief with our report due to the late hour. It's okay. So we are going to present the findings and recommendations from the Diversity Advisory Committee. And before we do that, we want to thank the volunteers, the PISD staff, the Diversity Advisory Committee members, of which we have some present tonight for the hard work that they've made over the last three years. So would our members of the committee who stuck it out till eleven o'clock. There were several other committee members who were here earlier, but due to the late hour, had to leave. So our mission was to, it's to advocate for, promote, and ensure strong relationships, improved communication, and enhanced understanding between Plano ISD and its diverse committee, or communities. And the goal that we received today, or this year, rather, was to develop and implement a parent support program to support the district's Commitment to Equity program, and working on reducing student opportunity gaps at all grade levels. And so we wanted to, and we were charged to, work toward the appointed goal. We collaborated with the Commitment to Equity, and we really tried to find synergies, not only with the work that's already being done in the district, but the work that our parents and our parent organizations are doing. One of the first things that we identified, for many of us on the committee, we are rolling off our third year, and we recognize that the district had made huge strides with the increased availability of ADD with the work towards equity, and so we feel that it's really important for the district to just keep moving forward. So our recommendations for twenty-seven eighteen against our goal are that the Diversity Advisory Committee should include a strong focus on creating an inclusive environment that supports those who are being serviced by the special education programs, either through physical limitations or learning differences, who could access advanced-level courses. And so we felt like it was important, this year in particular, to put a stake in the ground and say that that was a diverse community within our district, that we want to make sure that we are servicing and providing access to these advanced-level courses. We also want to encourage expanded opportunities for community dialogue to provide diverse perspectives around different topics. It became abundantly clear this year that the formula for the Diversity Advisory Committee is a winning formula. There are parents like myself who have been at Barksdale Elementary since two thousand and six. I have a rising senior at Plano West. I have a rising ninth grader going to Shepton, and I have a fourth grader still at Barksdale. But I'm not the only parent at the table. There were parents, there were administrators, there were faculty members, and there were community members who came together to discuss issues that relate to all of our students. And we recommend that the district consider creating more opportunities for our entire community to come to the table to discuss important issues that the district is, number one, making excellent progress on, but number two, that community members are interested in and concerned about, but don't have a seat at the table. So that was our recommendation there. We also recommend that we continue to support the role of cultural inclusiveness position within PTA at every, I think I skipped one, did I skip one? Okay. And through our PTA. And so one of the things that was really important to us was that we provide resources for parents and for students and for our campuses. And so these next two, this PTA role, is really providing color and content around that position within the PTA and having resources available to those who serve in that capacity to bring to each of the districts across, each of the campuses across the district, the conversation regarding diversity and access to these advanced-level courses. We also wanted to, and one of our students who's still here, I'm so impressed with, I'm impressed with everyone who's still here. Clearly, my voice has gone to bed, though I have not. But one of the comments that he made early on really touched on and underscores the recommendation that, and the clip that we're going to show you next that fits with this one, but we feel that it's important to expand the availability of Commitment to Equity and advanced coursework materials in languages other than English. And we heard loud and clear from our community members that that is the single most important gap that exists right now, is families who don't have the access to hear within their own either native language or one of the languages that they speak, encouragement, information, and resources about advanced-level courses. And so we were extremely excited to hear this incredible student who spoke to that as well. What we want to show you next in our presentation is a video that exists. Now, this is not the video, this is not the deliverable for our committee. It is a referential link, and so we're going to watch about forty-seven seconds of this video. What I want to tell you is that we have already lined up five families who are being interviewed over the next few weeks, and we have already begun doing work with them to share their experience and their understanding and their information and resources about advanced-level courses in languages that other family members and communities and parents are interested in hearing. And it goes directly to what our student said, that there is a lot of information in other languages that exists, but it's not accurate, and we think that it is incumbent upon the district to ensure that that information is available and accurate. So I'm going to show you this clip again. It is not our content, but it is the format with which, and kind of the template with which our video will be created.
I really enjoyed my time here at Rice with my friends and the fantastic teachers and staff, but now it's time for me to get ready for my next adventure, high school. Hey, hold that thought. Sorry about that, I just had to take a little selfie. That was me a couple years ago, and now here I am, a student in the IB World School at Plano East. You may wonder, what exactly is IB? The International Baccalaureate Program enables me to earn an international high school diploma while also earning a Texas diploma. IB courses allow me to move beyond my personal point of view and challenge me to consider knowledge in a global perspective. My studies include world literature, relationships between cultures and countries, connections between math and sciences, and the different ways we learn about ourselves and about the world around us.
So as you can see from that quick video link, what we want to do is create an engaging way for parents to share with other parents in their native language the opportunity and the information that's important for them to know which classes to sign their students up for, and that their students can be successful in those programs. And how do I get back to my presentation? I just have one more to add. Oh, is that me right there? Okay, so our recommendation, and that video is the first step of our recommendation. We encourage that the district would continue the work towards developing resources that are easy to produce and easy to access by parents. For twenty eighteen, nineteen, we recommend that the board consider the follow areas of focus for potential DAC goals. Parent information and support in the district's effort with social-emotional learning and promoting the well-being of all Plano ISD students and families. And you see the Plano ISD SEL core values, and we've highlighted in particular diversity as one of those that we want to embrace. So with that, that is the recommendation and report of DAC.
Thank you so much, especially for hanging in there with us. Normally, our meetings are not this long, but I really, I really appreciate your recommendation about language. And, you know, with our website now, I think there's a lot that we can, we can do with that. I think that's very, very important.
We did make that concerted effort to, with our parents and the students, that there's a student also in the group that they speak in their native language, and it's not subtitled or anything. We want them to speak in their native language so that it's a little more group.
Right. Okay. Any comments?
I think you did an amazing job at your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your service.
The video was fifty-one seconds.
Okay. Last report of the evening. At the board's request, the administration conducted a study around backpack weights and student health. Superintendent Sarah Bonzer will introduce this report. Ms. Bonzer.
Thank you, President Bender. We had a cross-departmental team led by Campus Principal Selinda Sager at Wilson Middle School, who was, has been working on her internship for superintendency, so she led the charge and conducted the research, and then the team kind of came around from the administrative side on supporting kind of some of the cross-departmental things we could consider related to backpack weights. So I'm going to turn the microphone over to Selinda and thank her for also hanging around.
I'm almost asleep, I'm not going to lie. I really appreciate this opportunity to provide this information to you guys tonight. Earlier this semester, Superintendent Bonzer had asked me to do some research regarding the effects of backpack weights on Plano ISD students, as well as to provide some recommendations that might be considered to bring awareness and education to our community, maybe in an effort to prevent some unnecessary strain or injury to our students with the use of backpacks. So when I first began researching the topic, I honestly wasn't sure that it was really a huge problem or that we, we needed to research it, but I quickly learned that studies have shown that ninety percent of our students do carry backpacks in the U.S. to and from school every day. So that's a large number of students that are, are doing that each and every day. As an educator and parent myself, this seemed completely rational and a good solution to students who need to carry homework and projects and lunchboxes and iPads and binders, and you get the idea, to and from. But they bring it back and forth to school, and it does cause some problems with the weight. This was kind of eye-opening for me as a parent, because I decided to use my own son in this project, and I, I started looking into what was he carrying in his backpack each and every day? And I determined after about thirty seconds that his heavy notebook from last semester that carried a project that was due two months ago, and his library book that I'm not sure he even cracked the spine on, was still in there, past due. And it was, it was, I was just wondering, is this really necessary? And I wanted to make sure that he was not getting on his bike and going to and from school every day with things that he didn't really need. Nonetheless, most of our kids do carry these backpacks, and it's important to consider what's really necessary and if they even realize these potential health concerns. Some of the research also reported that seventy-three percent of students carry their backpacks incorrectly on one shoulder. This statistic is pretty easy to prove if you want to come visit me at Wilson Middle School, because I spent about thirty minutes one day just walking into the cafeteria and watching the students walking in with their backpacks slung over one shoulder or way down past their waistline, and that's the hip-and-cool way to carry it. But that is absolutely not the appropriate way to carry it. And then perhaps the most important point from the studies that I read was that students carry backpacks that weigh twenty-two to forty-six percent of their body weight. This is considerably heavier than what's recommended by the American Chiropractic Association and the American Academy of Pediatrics, just to name a few. So something that starts out as simple as a useful backpack can usually cause some potential health problems or concerns along the way. According to an article written in the Journal According to an article written in the Journal of Clinical Chiropractic Pediatrics in a survey conducted by the Research Division of the Department of Family and Community Medicine, this is a limited list of symptoms or injuries that are contributed to overweight backpacks, carrying them for prolonged periods of time, and/or carrying them incorrectly. While some of these side effects are temporary and can be easily corrected, those associated specifically with back pain suggest that adolescents who suffer from this in their early years mo- more likely will have the same related issues as they grow up and become adults. Researchers also stated that many parents and students really don't fully understand that these risks that are now and later in life. Each piece of this research suggests that taking a proactive approach to prevent risk that could potentially affect students currently and into adulthood, one way to do this is through educational programs or communication, including recommendations about appropriate backpack selection, weight, and proper carrying techniques. So the main conclusions from the research that I did regarding the backpacks was that the American Chiropractic Association recommends students carry backpacks that weigh no more than five to ten percent of their body weight, and some other studies showed that it should not exceed ten to fifteen percent of their overall body weight. There have been limited scientific studies conducted that have produced consistent results to argue that one maximum percentage is more accurate than others, but it's difficult to find any group or association that's going to agree wholeheartedly about a maximum percent. Other factors should be taken into account to minimize student injuries such as backpack design, how it's worn, or the student's level of physical fitness. And then lastly, parents and teachers do play a critical role in helping students by properly educating them on health risks, being mindful of the overall weight of their backpacks, learning how to organize them appropriately, and certainly how to carry them properly. I included in this presentation just some recommendations from the research for students and parents, because ultimately the onus does fall back on them to keep up with that. It's really hard to, to check that every day when students are coming to and from school. Some of the, some of the recommendations, selecting the right size, knowing weight limits of the backpacks to carry, and that ten to fifteen percent, less than ten to fifteen percent was a common percentage that was listed in the research that I reviewed. They need to inspect what's in their backpack and make sure that things that are in there are necessary and that they're carrying it properly. They need to lift it properly, and then they need to adjust those straps, my middle school students especially, so that they're carried properly on their back and not below their waist. And I think the two most important ones are to keep up with the research and updates on the internet sites, there are multiple, if you go in and you, you just put that in Google, you will come up with hundreds of sites that will give you information on that. And as always, if there are any health concerns or injuries related, it would be important for them to consult with their family doctor about that. From the research, there were also some recommendations for consideration that involved academic services, technology, district health services. So at this time, I'm really going to turn this over to Dr. Hasley, Mr. Armstrong, and Dr. Breckman to give those, those considerations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the background there. Thank you. Well, each year that we have a textbook or instructional materials adoption cycle, we find that there are more and more digital and online resources available to us to access, for students to access resources, and which, that in itself may affect and influence what teachers plan for students in terms of carrying things back and forth. As with all instructional material adoptions, we always seek the best resources for the teachers to teach the content that's required, as well as be innovative options for students. Right now, there are a variety of venues for our instructional materials that are used in classes across the district, from traditional hardback textbooks to paperback books to consumable workbooks, online content delivered through videos or websites or apps, and many other online resources. We don't have a heavy reliance on hardback textbooks for every class. In some cases, there are class sets of books provided so that students have access to those in class and don't have to carry them from room to room throughout the day. If we look at the elementary level, in the lower grades, students are really learning to read. They're not reading to learn a lot of content in a subject area yet. So most of their books would be readers, trade books, leveled, leveled books that they're checking out from their teacher. We use consumable newsletters like Time for Kids, which is also lightweight. They may occasionally need a textbook at home, but that would not be the norm for all K-5 classes and subjects. In fact, the elementary math and science books right now are paperback consumable books, and sometimes they may even just tear out the pages to take home. There is an Avid binder that students who are in Avid campuses are required to use for organization, and that travels with them from school to home, but most of their homework would be included in that binder. So if we think about secondary, and I believe that's really where the focus here is and concern for backpack weight, as students progress through the grade levels, their resources do include more content in their instructional materials. And in upper elementary, middle school, students are learning to read, to read for content more than learning to read. Therefore, their reading for content will have more complex passages and bigger books. So we do have a newly developed spreadsheet that Dan will now pull up, it's loaded on the district website, and this is available for parents to see all the district-provided instructional materials for each course from grades six through twelve. And you can see that last three columns on the right will show you which courses provide a class set of books in the, in the classroom at school, which ones have one book per student where they could take it back and forth if needed, and which ones have online access available as an option. So again, as we continue to move through the instructional materials adoption schedule from the state, there will be more and more online options available to us, and we have made this document available, as I said, on the district website to parents. And also, as content coordinators from the Curriculum Department work with teachers, they of course show them how to use resources that we have, so they're well aware of the options for online access. So now, Dan, will take a moment to share a little from the perspective of the Technology Department.
All right, thank you, Katrina. Let me get back here. All right, with that being said, I wanted to continue the discussion of online textbooks and the concept of weight avoidance. This is the concept that for every time a textbook is opened online, that could be one less trip to the shelf to pull up or pull down and carry a textbook, or one less item to pull out of a backpack. Looking at Dr. Cooper's examples earlier, I'm a visual person myself with helmets, so I've got some sample textbooks that, and workbooks to take a look at, because we'll take some usage stats. I need to get this back because the curriculum will charge us if we don't return this. But that, that first exhibit right there, I was going to show some samples and some stats to everyone. But that first one is Envision Math, it's a workbook, it's from, the publisher is Pearson. What I wanted to show really was, that book weighs two-point-four-six pounds. Pearson's one of our biggest publishers, that's just a sample of one of their books. But when we talk about the web desk and the web desk project, where are we going, are collapsing all of our web resources as these books become online, I could tell you, the Pearson app, the portal that lets you go and check the books, was accessed one-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-two times this past year. And so if you take that, just with that example right there, we're talking about four-hundred-and-ninety-thousand pounds of weight that didn't have to be picked up. I have another book, it's a hardback book, one out of one, this is Texas Treasures, has a full online version. This is from another big publishing company that we deal with, McGraw-Hill. That weighs three-point-two-six pounds, I know that for a fact, because I tested it in finances postage stamp weight. McGraw-Hill has a portal out there called Connect Dead, the Connect Dead app on the web desk was accessed fifty-three thousand times, over fifty-three thousand times. So you're looking at one-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand pounds. So if you add all that up of weight avoidance, this is the part I was just happy to have fun with data, or humpback, that's ten humpback whales, twenty-seven school buses, or five-hundred-and-fifty-five grain pianos. And so what we're really talking about is, as we talk about going to online versions, we, we don't have to carry around these heavy textbooks in our, in the backpacks. So I want you all to remember, this is our first year of the One to Web project, and our first year of really doing the web desk and starting to collapse all these resources online. So as we go throughout this next year, we'll be collapsing more and more services this way and have netting a larger gain. And so one thing I did want to note that's going to be significant going into this next year is the web desk app that has all these, right now, it's kind of like your App Store or your Google Play Store, where we have all those resources and the students, the teachers to teach the students how to put them in their desktop. But this summer, where Matt and his team are working to get all the courses lined up with these textbooks, so that in the fall, when the students come back, they'll just have their textbooks automatically, they wouldn't have to figure out which ones to download. We're going to find the course numbers and relate them to those books, and then have those all collapse down, so to increase the usage of those online features as we move forward. So a lot of work is being done in this area to have the effect of the backpacks being subsequently lighter as this gets to be more of a resource that all the teachers will be using. So with that being said, that's the technological components of this area, and I think the last component is the district health services to bed.
Thank you. So in working with our district health services department, we have decided that we want to provide some information, guidance, and resources for parents and families about backpacks and some of the information you've seen this evening on the district health services website, where there is a wealth of other information available to parents on a number of different health topics. We would like to make sure that they know that it's there, we can then keep that information updated, as well as link directly to the information that you've already seen tonight about the online resources. We all know that students don't always give their parents all of the information that is available, so I, I know, shocking. But if we can provide it and link to the appropriate places on the website, make sure parents know that that's there, then we can provide them with the tools they need to make the best choices for their children and their family. Is that the conclusion?
I was the closer.
Okay. All right. Strong finish.
So one question I have is, we saw data that, I, I don't remember what was the source, but between twenty-two percent, the students were, or many students, majority of students, I don't remember exactly what it said, are carrying between twenty-two and forty-six percent of their body weight. And this whole thing started, large number of students, that's what it said, this whole thing started with, with my doctor, with my daughter started seeing doctors, different doctors for back pain, and I just picked up her backpack and it was twenty-eight pounds. So this was, this was just about twenty-two, twenty-five percent of her body weight. And the thing is that what we did, and we did that in several different instances, is open up her backpack, take everything out, what has to be there, and those big binders, the, she had a book that was heavier than, than the bigger one that, than you circled around here. So the question is, how pervasive is this problem here at PISD? You know, let's forget what the research showed about other schools, how pervasive is it here? And are there any actions? I mean, we can educate the parents on, starting from how to, how to wear, how to carry the backpack, but if at the end of the day, we filled her backpack back and it was still over twenty-six pounds, we still have a problem, and we're not digital yet. So I think what I'd like to know is, how pervasive is it here in PISD, or where do we stand here at PISD, maybe get some empirical data? And, and not just, well, I think it would be interesting to know how much they really carry, how much they really need to carry. So if we just, you know, we don't need fifty-four thousand students, but sample at different grade levels and get the sense of how big is the problem here for us, and be more specific with, with solutions, and how far, how, how quickly can we get into digital content? Is that the answer, or any other alternative answers?
It's late, I'm really tired. Where does the responsibility really lie?
Well, if they have to carry what they carry, it's, that's us.
What if they decide, no, Mom, I really, really want this, I want this with me, I don't want to leave it at home just in case I might need it. It's like, not, I mean, it's some personal choice, too.
And that, that's why I'm suggesting that maybe we, we continue this and do, take some empirical data and, you know, do sample tests and see how much do they carry right now, how much do they really need to carry? So this is where we isolate the, I really want to take this, but have a district resource look at it and say, well, no, this is not what you need, this is not what you need.
After voting the way we did on the building, because we have less funds for operations, I cannot support asking staff to do that survey. If you want to get an outside group to do it, or a student group that wants to do the research, I just can't imagine asking staff to conduct that survey.
It's the health of our students.
But I think like Missy said, it's where does the responsibility lie? I mean, we can, there were some good points on the PowerPoint that indicated that teachers could have consideration of what they send home, and they can make good recommendations, but at the end of the day, it's the responsibility, I think, of the parent and the child to determine what comes in that backpack and goes home and comes back. I just, and I don't want to give you the example that I experienced earlier this year, I'll tell you offline, but.
I, I like a lot of what I heard about, you know, moving toward digital content, and, you know, we're sort of at the pleasure of the publishers. I don't know, what, what percentage at secondary do you think is digital content?
It's actually, I'm sure you had an input, it is published in Katrina's area.
She's going for a number.
Just a number.
Seventy-eight percent are online.
Okay, so that's good, that's, that's, that's good. And, yeah, I think you talked about doing some parent education, and maybe there's, I, I don't know that I heard this, but maybe there's something put in the student handbook, you know, maybe you can do a video or something, I mean, I, I thought it was a, a good way to address the concern, that it is a problem, for sure. I saw it in my home.
Dan, in terms of adopting online or digital textbooks in our district, do you by any chance know what the trend is, what did we have last year in terms of percentage versus this year, what do we expect? What do we expect next year?
Well, the trend is that because the online content is, has the ability to be rich, we're talking about a one-for-one change out. What you're seeing, what Katrina alluded to also is, it's more than just one book for one digital book. There's the videos, there's, there's other different content that's transforming the traditional textbook concept when it does become online. So, so it's not a one-for-one correlation, I don't believe, where, when we do go digital with a lot of this content. But the trend is, what you're seeing up there also, is that as we do these adoptions, more and more, the publishers are being creative in their content and its use. And so I do believe that this trend is just going to pick up more and more, the device and the access has always been a little bit of an inhibiting issue that we're addressing. Like I said, this is the first year of that project. And so as we get more and more with the proliferation of devices and that accessibility is there, I really believe that it is going to decrease the weight of the backpacks as an ancillary type of metric. But how, to tie those together would be a little difficult to do, but I do believe that this will be the trend moving forward.
So one of the recommendations or considerations here is parent and student education and communication. So do we have something like that to help parents? You know, here's a checklist, make sure that, you know, take out all the stuff and see what's required, what's not required. Here is how to find out what's required and what's not.
We know what we want to include, but we haven't built that on the website yet. That's, would be this summer.
Okay, so you're going to do that this summer?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, this is, yeah.
Yeah, if I can just chime in. I know when we were initially charged with this, the board's charge was, do the work, but don't, I didn't feel like the charge was to administer the work until we brought the report back.
It was, the charge was to see if there is a problem, and I think the answer was, there is a problem. And I'd be happy if there's some, you know, I like going to a restaurant and seeing how many calories are in every, every item. So I think it would be nice to have something like that, so you will know exactly what you're going to be carrying and if there is a problem or not. If this is your student saying, no, I want to carry this book with me at all times, even though it weighs six pounds. So that, a way to know that that's what's going on. But if you're planning a...
Well, I think that in the teaching practices in the classroom, as more digital content is adopted, I bet teachers can be encouraging, hey, leave the textbook here, leave it in the class, it's already embedded on your laptop, on your Chromebook, use that, you know, maybe on both ends, but I think we can be encouraging.
Yeah, to me, it's just if you can, if you can measure it, you can manage it. So if we have a way to know what you're carrying, what you need to be carrying, what you don't need to be carrying, may be more important, and have guidelines along those lines, then that should probably be a good start as we bridge into more content is digital.
Okay, are we good?
No, let's talk about more.
Oh, let's, let's move on to policies. At most regular meetings, we have policies on the agenda for the board's consideration. These policies have undergone prior review by the district's attorney and by each board member. I invite Carla Oliver to introduce the policies we have on the agenda this evening.
Thank you, President Bender. First, we have DEC Local, Compensation and Benefits. This is presented for adoption under second reading, so you've seen this policy before.
Do I have a motion to adopt policy DEC Local on second reading?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously.
We had five minutes for this topic.
Okay, next policy is FL Local, Student Records.
Yes, this policy is presented for adoption under second reading as well. Over the last two years, parents requesting special education records have asked that they be delivered electronically, and this is to allow us better access to do so.
Okay, do I have a motion to adopt FL Local on second reading?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. FNF Local.
Yes, FNF Local, Student Rights and Responsibilities. This is presented for approval under first reading this evening, and then will be brought back to you for adoption under second reading at a subsequent meeting.
Do I have a motion to approve FNF Local on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item D is FFI Local, Finalizing Update 109 with Minor Edits.
Correct. This contains policy FFI Local, Student Welfare. This is presented to you under first reading and would come back to you under second reading at a subsequent meeting in June.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt FFI Local under first reading?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item E is EIF Regulation.
Thank you. Yes, EIF Regulation, Academic Achievement. This policy governs many points of graduation, and it's presented for review under first reading this evening, and again, will come back to you under a second review.
Do I have a motion to review item EIF Regulation under first reading?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item F is EIF Exhibit C.
Yes, this is our last item for your review this evening in regard to academic achievement. We received a resolution from TASB that needed to be connected to this policy in some way, so we've created it as an additional one. We have a regulation, now we have an exhibit, and with minor alterations locally, that's presented for your review this evening as well.
Do I have a motion to review EIF Exhibit C on first reading?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Conclusion of Public Comment Session. I now convene the 15-minute public comment session on non-agenda topics. Each speaker has up to three minutes. Carla Oliver, do we have any comment cards for non-agenda items?
We do. I think we should announce this person as the actual closer. Shayla Holub? Holub? Holub. Thank you.
So Superintendent, Honza, members of the board...
Pull the microphone over so we can hear you and you get recorded.
I'll let you know when you have one minute remaining. That doesn't mean stop talking. That means you have one more minute to go.
Okay.
But we might be kind of liberal because, you know, you've waited. Yeah, absolutely.
We go all the time. Okay, so Superintendent Honza, members of the board, administrators and staff, my name is Shayla Holub, and I live in Plano ISD. My daughter just finished kindergarten at Harrington Elementary, and my four-year-old asks me almost daily when he can attend this wonderful school. We feel blessed to be part of this community. So thank you for your time tonight and all that you do for Plano ISD. Now, for several months, there has been a lot of talk about arming teachers and staff in Texas schools. I am here because as a professor and a researcher with expertise in child development, as a volunteer for Moms Demand Action, and, most importantly, as a mom, I want to make it clear that many in our community do not want teachers and staff to carry guns in our schools. In response to the horrific shooting in Santa Fe, Texas, Governor Abbott released his School and Firearms Safety Action Plan for Texas school districts, including the expansion of the School Marshall Plan, which allows teachers or other staff to carry guns inside schools. For the safety of our students and educators, we urge Plano ISD not to adopt the School Marshall Plan. Guns do not belong in schools, which are meant to be places of sanctuary, safety, and learning for children. The presence of guns at school adds an unpredictable element that puts educators and students at increased risk and layers even more safety concerns on top of the heavy responsibilities already placed on teachers. There is no evidence that arming teachers will make schools safer. Arming civilians is not an effective way to stop active shooters. Law enforcement officers are extensively trained to handle the chaos and dynamics of an active shooter situation. Civilians are not. Out of 160 active shooter incidents, the FBI found only one successful armed civilian intervention, and that civilian was a trained US Marine. The notion that a teacher with less training would hit an active shooter is unrealistic, and there is risk of unintended injuries to students and staff in the midst of the chaos. Research indicates the presence of a gun at school makes children less safe. Students may know where teachers keep firearms and obtain access. Irrespective of age, access to a firearm triples risk of death by suicide and doubles risk of death by homicide. If teachers and other employees carry more guns into schools, we can expect tragic accidents. In March, a Northern California teacher and reserve police officer accidentally fired a gun inside a classroom, injuring at least one student. Other recent reports include school employees accidentally leaving guns unattended in bathrooms where they were found by students or parents. Experts in education and law enforcement agree that more guns in schools can increase volatility and risk. The American Federation of Teachers, the National Education Association, and the Major City Chiefs Association have expressed opposition to arming teachers. Liability insurers also recognize increased risks and often refuse coverage or raise premiums for schools that allow employees to carry guns. If lawmakers want to present, prevent school shootings, they must adopt proactive, common-sense gun solutions, or solutions to prevent people with dangerous histories from retaining guns in the first place. One way we can, we can save lives is support red flag laws, which Governor Abbott also recommends in his plan. Research shows that at least 42% of mass shootings, in at least 42% of mass shootings, the attacker exhibited dangerous warning signs before the shooting. Red flag laws allow loved ones and law enforcement to petition a court to have a person's access to guns temporarily restricted when they are found to be a threat to themselves or others. A red flag law would empower them to intervene before a shooter arrives at the schoolhouse door. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for all of you for staying, and this meeting is adjourned.